And welcome to the special meeting for the Millbury City Council, January 24th, 2017, the water study session. Could we have a roll call, please?
President.
Councilmember Leva.
President.
Councilmember Schneider.
Present.
Vice Mayor Pappan.
Here.
Councilman Lee.
Here.
And I'm present as well.
That's good.
At least in person, maybe not up here.
We'll answer that, okay?
Okay. Next on the agenda is public communication. Is that for at this time, or?
Yes.
Okay. So if you have, anybody would like to speak on an item not on this evening's agenda? This is the time for it now. You'll have up to three minutes to speak, and the views do not necessarily reflect the views of the city council or the city of Millbury. Anybody would like to speak on an item not on this evening's agenda? There will also be an opportunity at the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM for public communication as well. Yes. Sorry, can, see, is there a podium?
You have to come a step back. Can you come here?
Yeah. If you can stand near the front, we don't have a podium ready, but...
Actually, it was kind of a procedural question. I was wondering if my question would be off the agenda or on the agenda. It was actually kind of a specific question. I had read today in the San Mateo County Journal that you had said something about two 5 million gallon tanks that were problematic and that needed to be replacing. I was just wondering if you could maybe elaborate on that? Does that happen to be the, is that on the agenda, or?
That will be presented in the presentation this evening. Any others? Okay, so next is the update on the water infrastructure needs, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Clarification for the audience, you'll have an opportunity to ask your questions during this discussion, so, in case you have other questions or you have comments, you will have an opportunity to make those comments.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chan?
So, I think we should start by introducing Ray Chan as our Public Works Director. Ray.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Yeah. So, I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about the state of the Millbury water infrastructure. Our goal tonight is to discuss our water infrastructure system, and also, we have been incorporating a lot of information from the water master plan study, which is back in 2015. And we also want to discuss the action needed to maintain the system and to create a better system for city of Millbury. So our goal is, at the end of the meeting, we were able to get input from city council so that we can move to the next step. Please let me clear, tonight is the third session of the three study session that we plan to do, so that we can get input from the public and from the city council, so that we can move forward to create a better system with something that can serve the city's needs. The city of Millbury system, we serve about 23,000 customers, and we have about 6,500 connections. The water source is 100% from SFPUC. This is fortunate, because SFPUC water has been very famous for their water quality and reliability, but this is also unfortunate, this is the only source that we can get water. The system has 75 miles of water mains. The average life of the water pipes is about 60 to 70 mi, 60 to 70 years old. A typical water pipe lives, useful life is about 50 years. So you can imagine, this is, most of our pipes is way beyond their useful lives. The city has about 500 fire hydrants and 1,500 shut-off valves. Shut-off valves is something that, like, something that you're looking at right here. When we do water services, we can shut off some ends to isolate some location, so that it won't disrupt a lot of residents' water surface. The city has five water storage tanks, and we have two pump stations. Now, the storage tanks, the average lives, they're over 50 years old. Many of those tanks, the design life is somewhere between 30 years or even 35 years, so it's way beyond the design life. The pump station, back in 2008, we did some work on Madera Pump Station, but at Laxbury, it still needs a lot of improvements. So, as you can imagine, I've been here for eight months, many of the citizens have been here for a lot longer than that. Back in 2013, we experienced seven main breaks at the same day. Thousands of customers, thousands of our customers, we temporarily lost water surfaces. So city crew did some emergency repair on the same day. The good news is, city crew, even though we have a kind of limited amount of people working, but we were able to restore water within 24 hours. So this is really, really good news. And you can see, on most cases, we can, we could only do temporary repair, like a patch, put a collar on the pipe to patch the hole. But as you can see here, even we put a new collar to patch the hole, once they cram the collar, the pipe breaks again. This is what happened when the pipe is getting too old, it get brittle. So you may ask the question is, well, since the entire section of pipe is so old, why not just replace the entire section? Well, during emergency repair, our goal is try to restore water supply to the customer as soon as possible. In this case, within 24 hours, which is incredible. If we have to replace the entire pipe, it takes weeks. The question is, can we afford not to provide water to a customer for more than a week? This is another main breaks at Murchison and Loyola. You can see, this pipe is all, is totally rusted. You can see that the condition of the pipe, and you can imagine how bad the pipe condition This is one of the valves that we pull from our emergency repair. The valve is totally rusted. In fact, I have a similar example right here for you to examine. So, one of, a good water program is to make sure we have enough staff to occasionally or on a regular basis to exercise those valves. What that means is, we want to be able to open and close the valves, so that during service or replacement of the line, the valves are operating. But in many cases, because the valves are getting too old, they were just rusted and get stuck. Or when we turn the nut, it just completely break. So it causes a lot of problems.
Just keep it to me. That's a short mean.
For our water tanks, in this case, this is the skyline, we have two tanks at the All five tanks, they were built back in the 60s, so they are over 50 years old. And many of the tanks, because it built back then, it doesn't meet the earthquake requirements of today. This is more a close-up photos showing the condition outside of the tank. You see how rusted it is. Public Works, we have been doing patching, repairing, so the amount of man-hour, the amount of materials, the amount of time they will put in, is just, you know, our proportion right now. This is at the Laxbury Pump Station. Basically, you can see, the Laxbury Pump Station is just enclosed with a fence. Think about, you know, we have all the equipment, we have all the electronics in there, if people climb over the fence and tamper the equipment, it won't be good for us. So, this is a pie chart showing how we spent our money back in 2009. This is kind of, I want to say is more like an ideal case. One-third of the money spent on water purchase, one-third of the money spent on operation, and about a little bit more than a third spent on capital improvements. That means we place pipe, you know, we place pump. However, in 2016, because we spent a lot of money, a big portion of the money goes to water purchase, it leaves a very little money for capital improvements. So, what do we need to catch up or to build a better system, to better serve our community? Public Works recommendation is to replace about 2% of the pipe per year. Remember I told you, the pipe lasts about 50 years? So if we can replace 2% of pipe every year, in 50 years' time, we replace the entire system. And then after that, we start over again, so we will keep doing it. So this is one way of doing it. And more importantly, we need to replace our water tank, because these are not seismic safe. What that means is, if there's an earthquake or any other events, we could face major disruption of surfaces. So, in the last year, Public Works has been working very hard. We tried to come up with a better program to do preventive maintenance. This is really a choice, is whether we want to focus on constantly doing repairs, emergency repair, or we want to do, focus on more preventive maintenance. So, one of, there's so many things that we need to do, some of the things that we list in here, is like, we need to enclose the Laxbury Station, so that we can avoid tampering. And we need additional staff, so that the maintenance staff, they have more people to do more maintenance.
So with that, yes?
I'd like you to go back to the two circle pie charts that you had. That one, whoop, that one. And then, if you could go to the next one and explain the water purchase change, what changed? Is that something we control?
That's an excellent question. Actually, remember I told you, 100% of our water, we bought it from SFPUC, and this is not a choice. What happened is, in the last few years, SFPUC, each year, they increase our water purchase rate in a double digit. So, we have been, SFPUC has been raising the rate of 176%. With that, we never recover the money to pay for water purchases. This is one of the reasons, we have less and less money going to capital improvements.
If you could recycle 80% of that water that you use locally.
I'm sorry.
If you could recycle 80% of that pie chart of the water you utilize for things like irrigation, reducing potable water for irrigation, for everything. So if you could reuse 80% of that by recycling locally for wastewater.
That's another question, is about, if we recycle our water, would that help the usage of potable water? Well, the answer is yes, however, at what cost? We did some preliminary study about taking our wastewater treatment plant to do recycle water. First, if we just do the regular tertiary treatment, chances are, yes, you're right, we can do irrigation. But then the problem is, we need to pump back the water, go over the freeway, and then pump up the hill. So the pumping process, it takes a lot of energy, a lot of infrastructure, there's a lot of investment in there. So, can we get that money within a reasonable time, or we won't be able to get the money? So that's a separate issue, but we have been looking into that.
Ray, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you talked about the SFPUC raising their rates by double digits, was that arbitrary? Were they ripping cities off, or what's the reason for why they've raised rates so much?
So, there has multiple reasons. SFPUC, they are not just raising Millbury, they're raising everybody's rate. So everybody get water from PUC, we are paying the same rate. So, you know, but for SFPUC, to answer your question, SFPUC, their answer to us was, there has been increase of material costs, increase in the infrastructure costs, because they need to upgrade their system too. And also, during the last few years, there has been drought, so when the water usage lower, their revenue decrease. So that's one of the reasons they increased the rate.
Let me, can I clarify that too? Okay. The San Francisco system is over 100 years old, in many parts. For years and years, the purchasers, like us, did not insist upon them maintaining the infrastructure. Legislation was passed several years ago, and Basque, which is the Bay Area water, are representatives to the water system, now have a voice. Anyway, San Francisco has to report to the state legislature every year the safety of their water system. When that happened, all of a sudden, they decided that they had to improve their water system, and that's what we are all paying for now, is the 100-year-old pipes throughout the Hetch Hetchy system, their improvement, and you've heard on the radio recently, they closed one of the big tunnels to see what the structure looked like inside. So they have major system overhaul that they've been working on for years and years, and that's what we're paying for, because they didn't do it for so many years. They took all of our money, and it went into the San Francisco's general fund. Sadly, now, we are all paying that price.
This water issue is going out throughout the county and throughout the whole Bay Area, as you know. And all the old infrastructure cannot be really replaced without tremendous expenses. So there are cities now that are looking into micro grids, because the technologies that process water, whether it be wastewater, sewage, stormwater, whatever, they have become small. They can make them small, automated, fully automated, so you don't need daily monitoring. And you recycle the water flow, so you may want to consider that as an option. So that, for example, a hotel can process its own water. A block of 40 homes can process their own. It's a much simpler, smaller system, you don't have to go back and replace all of the equipment, and they get to recycle that water right on the spot, so you don't have to ship it across town to get it to your customers.
Can you tell us where those, who's doing that now? I mean, it sounds very interesting.
Well, actually, different small buildings are doing it. Santa Monica started it. They created a stormwater reclamation facility back in 2000. I worked in a corporate, sorry, an office complex, a large one, that created their own water treatment system, and recycled their own, 80% of their water internally within their complex. So the systems have been around a very long time. They're modular, they come in containers, literally, the military's been using them to drop them in. They're small, so you can fit them into small places. Canadians have been doing it for years in small communities, remote communities. So technology's been improved. We just haven't gotten to it, because, first of all, municipalities don't want to lose their control over their water treatment plants. But now, to replace them or update it is extremely expensive, so we have a trade-off.
Sorry, can I just comment quickly on that? We are working with a company called Rev, which is working with several of the larger employers and, you know, businesses in town, to work on what, you know, not just what the city can do in terms of publicly, but what private businesses can do to improve sustainability. So maybe that's something that we can discuss with them, in terms of, you know, there's things that the city could do, but also, if, you know, some of the larger hotels or the larger buildings could do some of their own water recycling, that would help ease the burden on the city as well. So, I think we can look into that as well.
Could you ask them to introduce themselves, please, so that we know? I have a feeling that we're listening to a lot of city people, people with, you're not hearing from residents, so it would be helpful if people could introduce themselves into our speaking room.
And, sorry, could we also have all speakers speak into the microphone, so it gets picked up by MCTV, as they're recording the meeting tonight? Thank you.
Hi. My name's Joe Charisi, I'm a resident. I have a question and a comment. The question is, I'm a little confused, because at the start of the process, you sort of led us to believe that the pipes that are in the ground are all the original pipes, but then you said that prior to 2009, that there was a capital program to do replacement. Can you tell us approximately how much of the system's been replaced since it was originally built? And then my comment is, I think it would be very helpful to the audience if you would explain to us all how the water system is funded, and that it's, you know, an enterprise fund separate from the general fund, and how the system is funded through rates and is separate from the, all the other services that the city provides.
Thank you. So, let me answer the second part of the question in brief. The water system actually is paid by the Water Enterprise Fund. So whatever you get from the water rate is paid for the entire system, from maintenance to capital project. The other question that you have is, previously, the city, let me answer this. The city has a program, however, the program has been doing very little, it's not even able to catch up, you know, the aging structure. Before 2016, I can say, what we have been doing is very short run of replacement. Last year, this is one of the major projects that we did, which is, we are completing right now, is like almost two miles of pipe. But before, we don't even do that. So, we have been doing a lot of catch-up.
So where did the money go? I was just...
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I've got two questions. One is, aren't we subsidizing some of the, putting some of our general money into the enterprise fund? I believe we were subsidizing some.
I didn't answer.
And, no?
No.
Okay, okay. And then, the orange part, can you explain why that big, that piece is bigger now?
The orange part?
Yeah. The operations and maintenance, why is that larger?
Okay, so, so my understanding is, when you compare this chart and this chart, you see the operation and maintenance, the percentage is much larger. So, this is what happened, when we don't have enough capital improvements, we are facing more breaks, that means we need to do more emergency repair, and this is why this portion is getting bigger. So, this goes back to the question that I raised, it's like, what, it's a choice, do we want to keep doing emergency repair, or we want to have a good maintenance program, so that we don't have to keep doing like temporary repair or emergency repair?
Thank you. I'm Gail Grinsell, I live in Millbury. My question is, you said, I think, that your goal was to replace the pipes 2% of them a year, which means it would take 50 years to replace all the pipes. And you also said the pipes are 60 to 70 years old. This doesn't make sense to me, because then, you add 50 years, by the time you get all the way through the system, you, the, some of the pipes are 120 years old. So, I don't get the logic of this.
Thank you for bringing this up. So, if the council or the citizen tell me that, Ray, I want you to replace 4% of pipe every year, I would do it for you. Now, the reason Public Works, we kind of recommend 2% as a start is, one thing that we think about is, do we have enough money to support the program? How much do we want to spend? So, the second thing is, let's say, if we want to do 5%, 6% of replacement of pipe, do you want to see every single one of the streets got trench open, you know, for a long time? You know, you can't even get back to your home. So, the rate of 2% is not an arbitrary number, it's something that we think of as pure science. You know, we try to use 50 years to replace the system. Now, if the citizen or council decided, let's do more, let's jumpstart the system, maybe in the next five years, let's do 3%. And then after a while, if the system gets stabilized, you know, we can lower to 2%. We can do that. And this is the reason we have the meeting today.
I have just two questions. I was wondering, between the 2009 and 2016 graph, it says that the gray...
Can you state your name?
My name is Yoyo, I live in Millbury. On the 2016 gray sliver, you wrote that it's less than $500,000. So how much is it on the 2009 graph? So, what is the total value of the circle, that we need to know to understand the graph? And also, number two, assuming a 2% yearly pipe replacement plan, how much, in terms of dollars, would a plan like that cost? And as we scale the project up, what kind of cost are we looking at? How much does a 2% plan cost for yearly replacement, and how much does a 4% cost, and so on?
So, let me answer the second question. Like I stated, our goal tonight is, instead of talking about how much, it's more like, let's understand our system, and then let's get some input. So, I would rather defer that to maybe the second or third study session, we have plenty of time to do that. So, your first question, talk about is, if this represent about half a million dollar. So what happened in 2009, how much would that represent? So, I don't have exact number with me, but I can tell you, in 2016, we spent about $6 million for the entire water operation. But back in 2019, we spent a little bit less, maybe somewhere between $5 to $6 million. So when you say, when we look at about, back then, we have about one-third of the money spent on CIP, so you are looking at about a million and a half, something like that?
Hi, my name is Peter Vora, I'm at Santee. I live at 823 Clearfield Drive, so I'm a local resident, and I'd also like to be transparent. I did serve the city for a few months as a consultant in Mr. Chan's position. So I'd like to make two comments with regard to the water system. Deferred maintenance is nothing, is very common in the water distribution business. And basically, pipes undergrounds, out of sight, out of mind. I mean, nobody really paid too much attention to that. And this kind of dovetail into what councilperson Gina Pappan said about San Francisco, yes, same thing. They had a lot of deferred maintenance, which kind of blew up on them, and recently, or past five years or so, they must have spent several billions of dollars upgrading their system, and, which is partially why it translate to the higher wholesale water cost that everybody along the peninsula have to pay into, because we obtain water from the system. So, deferred maintenance is an issue with the entire industry, and it eventually will catch up with us. And 50 years, design life is correct, and some pipes, like Mr. Chan mentioned, has been in the ground for 60 years, and there are older ones, and pipe breaks, and that's why the operating cost is getting higher and higher. And the second comment is with regard to that pie chart there, why do you, why is the orange portion getting bigger? And partially, it's because of the fact that, as, like, again, Mr. Chan has mentioned, over the past couple of years, the effort in conserving this resource, precious resource, has been so successful that the, we conserve about 25% of our water usage over the past two years, and that translates to significantly less revenue. And, okay, with less revenue, obviously, the piece of the pie gets bigger, and then that eats into the capital improvement. I would like to rather call it capital investment, because, you know, we're just not investing in replacing our infrastructure. So, thank you.
Mr. Chan, I have a question, before we go to the next speaker. Under the previous Public Works Director, we discussed, when we were discussing the, sorry, the road paving and doing the road paving, one thing that came up was, we talked about, instead of doing a certain amount every year, we try to do double that amount every two years, because under that way... Because under that way, you know, by doing larger contracts, we may be able to get a better value and a more efficient type of contract. You know, more streets done for the same budget, or the same number done for a slightly smaller budget. That's something we can look into in terms of water. If we were to do, say, an average of a 2% replacement, instead of doing 2% every year, do maybe 4% every other year, would that be more efficient for the city?
Yeah. My understanding is, previously, what Public Works recommend was, we try to... let me back up. So previously, Public Works always do smaller projects. Like I mentioned, we never... we have never done two miles of water pipe like the one that we are doing right now. So it makes sense to double up those project and kind of combine it together, and then do it every other year. Because that will get the efficiency. Because, you know, you just use the same amount of people to manage the project. And my understanding is that before, we didn't have the manpower to do it. So it makes sense to do less project. That's why they tried to do it every other year, other than, you know, every year. Because it does cost a lot of manpower. But this is up to the point that we cannot afford to do it every other year. One of the reasons is, yes, we can double up and do 4% a year, but then we'll have to open up all the streets at the same time. It costs a lot of traffic issue. It costs a lot of inconvenience for the resident. My recommendation is, I would rather do 2% consistently, 2% every year, or 3% in the first few years, in that kind of range, so that, you know, we can get more pipes done. And one more thing is, tonight at the City Council, we are going to come up with a staffing plan, which include more staff, which can manage more projects on an annual basis.
Just to follow up on that, could we do perhaps... I don't know exactly how the contracts work, but kind of like a multi-phase project, so that we're not having to go back and write up another RFP each year. We can come up with a scope of work with the contractor and say, you're going to do 2% year one, another 2% year two, et cetera. So that there's that, you know, scope of work. You're covering the same amount, and you're spreading it out over time, but you're not having to put in, you know, you're not having to reinvent the wheel each year and write up a new contract each time.
That is really thinking outside of the box. That is something that we will consider. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think we were... tonight's agenda talks about full-time staff. So when you talk contracting, I'm kind of hoping that we get into the mode of having our own staff, and so we can...
Correct.
Okay. Sorry.
But I believe that typically, the actual physical replacement of the pipes is done by a contractor.
Yes, that's correct. I believe what the mayor was trying to say was, we can design a bigger project, and then kind of do it every year. You know, with like breaking it up and doing it every year, so that, you know, we don't have to keep designing every year. So this is something that we can consider.
Like a master plan?
Like a master plan, like a multi-phased, you know, type of approach. Councilman Schneider?
Mr. Chan, some of the other projects, sometimes, if you haven't followed all the City Council meetings, we've been given maps for the sewer pipe upgrades, and we know which basins are most at risk. Are we... are you working on maps for the entire city? And we also know that some of our neighborhoods are younger or older than others. The older ones may not be the ones with the worst pipes. You know, I... So I'd love to see more maps on that. I think that would help. I don't know if... it's a little too soon right now to prioritize which neighborhoods might need water pipe repair. I think the other thing for the public to consider is, the city has taken a goal, and I won't use the right terminology, but to try to only fix a street once. So they're trying to coordinate the water pipes with the wastewater pipes, with putting in conduit for any kind of communication upgrades. So it's really... it's a pretty amazing process to go through on this, and I congratulate the city for doing that. But I'd love to see more maps. I am a geographer. Please give me maps. I think visual can really help.
Yes, thank you. To answer your question, we do prioritize. So we know which areas are better than the other area, so they are kind of lower priorities. We have been prioritized, and we know which area we need to fix first. And we'll bring you map next time.
Which was my one question. If I happen to live, or if someone happens to live on a street that is a low-priority sewer street and a low-priority water, but they've got huge potholes, but they're not a well-driven street like some of our courts. And I know I've got a resident, I could see in the audience on Corte Princesa. It's one of those streets with huge potholes that have been fixed. But it's not a high-traffic street, so logically, it's a lower priority street. And that's just a sad reality. Unless you're going to do Vista Grande at the same time. So how do you help those people that are living on some streets that are in pretty bad shape, but aren't high priority pipewise?
So right now, we are focusing on water and sewer. The reason is, we try to do on underground before we do the street. Usually, the payment is the final stage. To answer your question, I understand the city CIP has been dropping a little bit at a time every year. Currently, our CIP is still 56, which is kind of low. We are the bottom...
Capital improvement?
I'm sorry?
Capital improvement?
Yes.
CIP?
No.
Just for the audience?
The CPI.
CPI? Okay.
I mean, the P... I'm sorry. The PCI, the Payment Index, the Payment Condition.
Okay.
So the PCI is 56, which is pretty low, and is the bottom third from the San Mateo County. This is one of the things that, as soon as tonight, if the City Council approve more staff to Public Works, one of our goal is to start working on the payment program. This is something, is one of the citizens' priority, you know? And then, we need to start looking into several things. Number one is, we have not been diverting enough resources and budget to fix our payment. So we need to look into that. The second thing is, we need to go after more grant funds. Many times, we need to do, you know, grant matching. So this is something that we need to look into. Hopefully, we can get a bigger part for payment fund, then we can replace or repair payment faster.
Vice Mayor Pepin? And then let's go to the audience.
Okay. I find this whole situation exceptionally tragic here, and extremely important that we have to deal with this now. You've mentioned the reservoirs that we have, what, five of them?
Five of them.
Okay. So in what you're talking here, cost-wise, the 2%, that's not even including the reservoirs?
No.
Okay. So that's in addition to. So if we were to improve the reservoirs and even increase the capacity, what's that going to do to our aging pipes here? Is that going to... are we just looking for what happened when Mr. Lee became mayor? All those breaks in 2013, was it? Friday the 13th, yes. Which was a bad day throughout the city here. But, you know, how does this work? We're then able to store more? Does that mean we're buying more to San Francisco? Where's... when we put water into those reservoirs, is that our water from rain? Or where's this water coming from?
Okay. Water... our water is always coming from SFPUC. So this is pretty much that.
Okay. So that goes into our reservoirs, those big tanks?
Yes.
Which are corroding, obviously?
Yes.
Okay. So if we... I do men... I think I heard Governor Brown say, we want to increase water storage. So maybe, and hopefully, we can get some money from the state level. I don't know if that's possible, but that would be a good thing.
That would be a good thing. We will look into it.
Okay. So in addition to what you're saying here, 2%, we also have to deal with those five different...
Tanks.
Tanks. Tanks is easier for me.
That is correct, yes. The 2% that we recommend as an initial recommendation is only for pipe replacement.
I agree with the audience here. I mean, none of us are going to be alive at that point. We have to get serious about this, and hopefully, by giving you more staff, we can get moving a little more quickly on this repair stuff. My neighborhood was built in 1976, so we're at 40 years. The workmanship on that neighborhood was shoddy anyway, so I kind of doubt that we even make 50 years. But there's like, I don't know how many miles that is. And then the new residents on the top of the hill, the school property, that's pretty new. So I don't know how many miles, you know, age-wise. Yeah. I... But I just... we have to do something much better than this. And I know, you don't have the staff. We're going to talk about that tonight. But I really think we have to go more aggressively to ensure our water safety.
Thank you for your support. I think, I believe there's a person sitting there?
Vivian, I'm a resident. North side of Millbrae. I guess I'm just trying to get my handle around it. So I guess my first question is, has the City of Millbrae ever had a water department with personnel who go out and test the valves, et cetera, et cetera? I'm hearing no. Has the City of Millbrae ever... I mean, you people have been, there's many of you have been City Council members for a while. So, you know, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, there's never been...
None of us have been here that long.
But... but residence-wise.
The record certainly agrees.
So has there ever been a water department? Like Burlingame has a water department. Those guys know and understand their water system. And they go out and they check, and they're now replacing a piece of the water main over there. So I'm asking, I mean, this isn't something that... to me, this has been something that's kind of been, I don't know, but buried under the ground, is a good term. So we... I mean, you must... the city government must have known that this was an issue going on. So I wanted to know whether there's a city... there's ever been a city water department? And two, it was going to... I heard you mention about, I didn't realize, thank you, that they were going to be full-time, because that was a concern of mine, whether you're going to be hiring full-time people whose responsibility would be to the City of Millbrae and doing this work, so that they'd be qualified? And/or would they... you'd just be hiring contractors again? And I have a concern about just hiring contractors. Although, it's a contracting firm that does do the replacement work.
So can I ask a question to the question? When you say, have we always had a... have we ever had a water... so water department, it's... they're part of the... they do... they take care of the water department? Is that what you mean? I'm asking.
So what I think, but I don't know, is that the engineers in the Public Works Department are, I'm going to call it multifaceted. So they do this, or they do that, or they do the other thing. What I'm asking about, is there ever been a water department? And my gut tells me no. Because I believe, if there had been a water department, maybe it wouldn't be as dire as it is right now. So the water department, meaning that there are personnel that have been part of the city, in the city water department, not collecting the money, but going out and actually doing the maintenance and operations and everything of a water system.
I can assure... I haven't been here for 20 years or 10 years, but since I've been here, there is somebody that has always participated in that. Their crew that goes out there, they know the lines. Actually, I'm going to go out on a limb a little bit. The mayor and I just did a tour of Public Works, and it was pretty incredible how organized and detailed each portion and job was. And I think that's what you mean by water department, but it's not called water department, but exactly that. From recycling of the water, to the plant of the water, to the lines of the water, to the flushing of the water, all of that is delegated to certain staff in our city. Is that...
Isn't that like it's part of the road to ground, or part of the...
Robert Sneeden, the residents. Now, I'm just saying, my son used to work for the city, and he would actually go out and take the reading from the meters with the wand, I guess I'm going to say, you know? But I've always looked at it as, the water department didn't say water department, kind of as part of the maintenance of the city. Matter of fact, Tom Colletti was my next-door neighbor, who was one of the older...
You're in the right department.
Yeah, right. Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. So I think maybe we don't recognize it as the water department, because it's actually an entity in its, you know...
I think so. So I just wanted to reassure you that, yes, we have a department that is in charge of the water, if that makes sense. It's not making sense to you.
Mr. Chan, can we just clarify? We do have people that do maintenance on the water system that are city employees, but it's my understanding, it's just, what, two or three people? It's not very many? It's not enough to sufficiently be monitoring the entire system on a routine basis?
That is correct. In fact, many of the Public Works employee, they have been cross-trained. Many of us, we do multiple work. Maybe the first two hours, they do water-related work. Second two hours, they do storm-related work. So we are pretty lucky to have this kind of employees working for Millbrae. Burlingame, what I know is, they had over 1,000 breaks last year. Over 1,000 breaks last year. So we are not the only one. So our neighboring cities, and in fact, many of our neighboring cities, they use more contractors than we do. As you can see in the photos, our crew actually did a lot of emergency repair ourselves. So, you know, I'm so proud that, you know, I'm the head of this department. One of the issue is, I'm glad you're bringing this up. One of the issue is, we have 1,500 shut-off valves. Just to shut off, I'm not talking about the other kinds of valves, like pressure-relieving valves. And we have limited amount of people. In our water division, you know, we only have two persons. You know, you can imagine, you know, even if we have a robust program, we may not have enough people to manage it. So this is one of the reason, tonight at the City Council, I'm going to ask the City Council to approve, so that we have more full-time employees.
Howard Atkins, I live on El Benito in Millbrae. And I've been here for over 50 years. And there was a... they trenched El Benito for...
Could you hold the microphone up, sir? Thank you.
They trenched El Benito for a pipe or something. They put it in the ground. And I don't know the great departments we have here, but when they did it, I don't know if it got inspected or not, but it alligatored all the way down. And I ended up with a pothole, and it's a pretty major street going through there. It's one-way. And I asked the city to put in a bump, but they said it would be dangerous. But this hole was six inches deep, two feet wide, and 36 inches long, and it was there for months. And I called up and got nothing done. The parking wreck has not trimmed that area. Trucks can't even get through there without scraping the sides. And my point is, I'm terrified about this new project they're going to put in on El Camino. We aren't... this is like United States invading Iraq. We can't handle what we got, and we're going to take a project like this on? It's nuts. You know? And I've tried to send messages to the City Council, do you read the messages on your website? And when you go to Millbrae Water Department and call that number listed on your website, it goes to San Francisco Water Department. And they don't know anything about Millbrae. And that's another point that I'd like the City Council to look into, is they have... they have a huge maintenance department right here on El Camino in Millbrae. The water storage is in Millbrae on Crystal Springs. And I think they should participate at some level with us. And that article that you put in the paper, I talked to somebody in the water department, Jim, and he said it was all erroneous in those water capacities weren't correct, and a lot of the information in your article was inaccurate. And, you know, it really scared me and some of the residents there. If that tank ruptured, of course, I'd be right downstream from it. And he said there's no chance of that, and that it's safe, and it's... all the water tanks are inspected by yearly... or every two years, and they aren't in danger at all.
All right. All right.
Hi. Peter Vohr. I'm at Santee. I'd like to offer three comments. Mr. Chan threw out a 2% replacement per year, and I'd like to kind of take that, ground that, you know, bring us back down to ground a little bit there, because...
Mr. Chan, throughout a 2% replacement per year, and I'd like to kind of take that, ground that, you know, bring us back down to ground a little bit there because it was simple math. We have 75 miles of pipe, 1% is seven and a half miles, 2% is 15 miles of pipes. We just, last year, we, the project that we had, which was, is considered to be a major project of about two, about $2 million, replaces about two miles. So I don't think 15 miles a year is too realistic.
The finance group over here is arguing your numbers.
1.5 is 2%.
Yeah, but anyway, but I, but definitely there's a big need for, for, for pipe replacement. There's, there's no doubt in my mind. Number two, is this imminent? The sky is probably not falling, but it is definitely a prudent decision to, to replace pipes. I say that the sky's not falling because of the fact that we had a major fire in the city last year and the water, one of the main purpose of a water distribution system is for firefighting and we did, we came through that well. So, you know, the sky's not falling, but you know, it needs to be replaced. Point number three, I don't think it's a matter of people not doing things, not maintaining the system. I think it's, it's, it's an issue of having enough funds in the, this enterprise fund, which funds itself. Everything, all the expenses have to be paid by rate, by the rate that we paid in. There's just not enough money in the, in the pot to, to maintain the system properly and reinvest properly to, to ensure that the, the, the system will be here forever, basically. Thank you.
Mr. Chan, do we have a process so that residents who are watching this TV at home can, if they have questions, we can begin to create a frequently asked questions list or a, or a Q and A? If so, how would they go about doing that?
I think if people have further question, what they can do is they can send it to the-
You might want to look at the camera.
Yes. People, if people have any question after this meeting, they can send it to the City Council. What we can do is we can compile the question and then put it on our website as a, as a F, you know, frequently asked question.
Another one of those acronyms, FAQ, frequently asked questions for government parlance there.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Peppin?
Okay. It's kind of a cycle here. So we've reduced our water usage by 25%. Congratulations to everyone here in the audience. And then we're telling everybody here that we've got to spend a lot of money to improve our system. I will state for the record here, and the gentleman mentioned future developments, this is a point in time where the residents need to, and the council and everyone, the best, highest use of anything that comes into our city needs to be bringing us a revenue stream as well. You mentioned 1,000 breaks in Burlingame. Burlingame got an extra $4 million in revenue last year from hotels. And so whatever we do moving forward here, we need to ensure that we are making an investment in our future and the revenue stream so that we can pay for more staff and hopefully increase our infrastructure improvements.
Councilman Lee?
I, thank you for that comment. I think that's very, very important to realize that we really need to start working hard on trying to increase our budget and increase our revenues because, like I said, it would offset a lot of the costs to us taxpayers if we can get, if we can increase our revenues. I, you know, this, this whole, I think it was said in the very beginning that, you know, underground pipe's not sexy. It's not something we think about. But if you start thinking about it, do you want to have a situation like they have in Flint, Michigan, where you have to bathe and drink water through, with water bottles? Water is a critical part of life. Do we want to take a risk at not making sure that our safe, our water system is safe because a leaky pipe can easily, can be contaminated? So it's a safety issue as well. So if you want safe drinking water, and we all do, we need to keep, you know, just like a car, we have to keep putting the maintenance in it. We don't want to, you don't want to break down the middle of 880 or 101 or on a Bay Bridge before you do something about it. You want to make sure the brakes are kept up. You make sure that you have oil in your car. We need to maintain our water system. It's not sexy, it's out of sight, we take it for granted. But you know, things do fall, things have a lifetime. They don't last forever.
And it is 7:00 PM. We're scheduled to begin the regular council meeting at this time down in the council chambers. So at this point, I think it would be time to adjourn.
Before you do that, Mr. Mayor, Ray, could you indicate, we have talked about having more sessions so that we could discuss some of the questions that came out tonight and bring back more information. Do we have that scheduled and if so, when and where?
So we are planning to have the next session in about a few weeks, so-
We have not set the date yet.
We haven't set the date yet. One of the reason is it depends on how much question we come up after this meeting and then it depends on how much time we need to address those stuff. But we will, definitely we'll bring back map and the Q and A in the next meeting.
So if people here are interested in finding out when that is, can they sign up somewhere here this evening? Is there a sign-in with phone number, email so that we can capture that and let them know when the next session is? Be great.
And Mr. Chan, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but as we move down to the council chambers, will you be available to take questions from residents as we leave and move on to the next meeting?
I think that's who's out there.
He actually has a presentation, but except for that presentation, he will be.
I think if we leave him here to take names and, and addresses and emails and agree to post and put on MCTV would be excellent. We can always move his item if, at your discretion to, to wait for him to join us if that would be the pleasure of the council.
I think it's towards the end of the meeting, right?
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, okay, so we're now adjourned and we'll go down to the regular scheduled meeting, 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a short meeting. It's just an hour and then they're going, then they're going to go downstairs to the council chambers and do their regular meeting down there.
But that's not building?
No, no, that's building too, but-
There's a seventh center room?
Yeah, 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 it's coming from the chamber.